I know. Is Kevin back yet? We'll call this meeting to order at June 28, 1837 for our budget hearing. So first, we'll have Jackie do roll call.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Counselor Hooker?
Here.
Counselor Bjarnson?
Here.
Counselor Whitney?
She's out today.
Counselor Kenyon?
Here.
Mayor Hollitt?
Here.
Counselor Coker?
Here.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Here.
Okay.
All right, first order of business is to, can you put up the resolution for adopting the budget?
Excuse me for a second, Mayor Hollitt, doesn't the Budget Committee members need to be called upon too, or no?
No, this is not a Budget Committee meeting.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah. All right, Don, will you refresh my memory? Do we ask for public comment during the middle of the resolution meeting, or is that before?
I think we need to open a public hearing. First.
Okay, and does public comment? Become before we read the resolution, or after?
What? Mayor, I believe I can take care of that all.
Okay, go ahead.
And so I think first we need to open a public meeting, and I'd like to.
We did that.
Okay, so we're open to plug meetings, so then we need statements in favor, and what these are for is for, I'll just do them this way, we have three resolutions. Resolution 202-22 is a resolution declaring the city's election of received state revenues. Resolution 3- or 03-2022 is a resolution certifying that the city of Oak Ridge provides four or more of the required municipal services for state funding. And then Resolution 04-2022 is a resolution, resolution adopting the budget, and do you have a copy of it? The last one. And the 04-2022 is a resolution to adopt the budget, making a resolution, making appropriations, and a resolution imposing and categorizing the ad valorem tax. So I believe if we could just do the public hearing on all three of the topics of the, or actually it's four topics of the resolution.
Okay, is there no public comment before we get into that, though?
No, I believe we do the.
In the, in favor or opposed, or?
Yeah, so, so basically that would, we opened, the hearings opened, so do statements in favor for the general passing of the budgets and the associated resolutions to provide the shared revenue and to state what services we have. And then there'd be statements against and statements of neutral.
Okay, so call for statements in favor first.
Do I have any statements of favor, City Hall?
Okay.
I've got head shaking. No, so no, no statements in favor at City Hall.
Okay, any statements in favor over the Zoom, raise your hand? Okay, let's call for neutral in City Hall?
Any statements?
Yes.
Sorry, but I believe in a public hearing, each statement means to be read three times.
Yeah, you're right.
So, so technically speaking, I believe we can read them three times or leave each section open for 10 minutes, so.
Let's read it for three times.
I'll go, I'll go back to the.
In favor.
Favor at City Hall? Any statements in favor on Zoom? Any statements of favor at City Hall? Any statements in favor on Zoom? If people could help me on Zoom, because I'm having to go back and forth.
I'm looking.
Is there any statements? In general at City Hall? Is there any statements in general on Zoom? Is there any, any statements in general at City Hall? Is there any statements in general on Zoom? Is there any statements in general at City Hall? Is there any statements in general on Zoom? Is there any statements against at City Hall? Is there any statements against on Zoom? Is there any statements against at City Hall? Is there any statements against on Zoom? Is there any statements against at City Hall? Is there any statements against on Zoom? Did I get the last one three times? Okay.
You're muted again, Kevin.
I would say, Mayor, we have no statements for or against, or in general, either at City Hall or on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. So next, is it a motion to adopt the budget for resolution?
So the first one would be if we're going to do them in order.
Zero.
Can you bring zero two up?
Zero two, two zero two two?
We don't, I don't have a motion speaks. Did you? I have the resolutions, I don't have motions.
Is the first resolution zero two, two zero, two two?
Yes, and I can read, I'll, I'll read it for you.
Perfect.
While she's bringing it up. Resolution number zero two dash 2022, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. Whereas state revenue sharing law, ORS 221.770 requires cities to annually pass a resolution requesting state revenue and sharing money, and whereas in order to receive state revenue sharing in the 2223, the city of Oak Ridge must pass a resolution approving participation in the program and now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Oak Ridge that Section 1 pursuant to ORS 221.770, the city hereby elects to receive state revenues for fiscal year 2223, passed by the Oak Ridge City Council of the city of Oak Ridge this 20th day of June 2022. Approved and signed by the mayor of the city of Oak Ridge this 28th day of June 2022, signed Mayor Hollitt and attests Jackie Taylor, city recorder. And then a's and nays are to be recorded. I certify that a public hearing before the Budget Committee was held on June, and that we'll have to fix that, that's a typo. So fix the typo of June 21st to June 28, 2022, and a public hearing before this council was held on, oh no, excuse me, that is not a typo, that is me not reading it right. So I certify that a public hearing before the Budget Committee was held on June 21st, 2022, and a public hearing before the city council was held on June 28, 2022, giving citizens an opportunity to comment on state revenue sharing. So that motion is before you, again, that is the resolution to receive state revenue sharing.
I'd like to make a motion.
Can we scroll down just a little to see the motion?
That's not a correct motion, that's from Budget Committee.
That's where I was wondering.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't have motions because I was doing police work up until soon before the meeting, and Colleen did the resolutions for me. The rest, I believe the motion would be to approve Resolution 02, 2020, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues, and she's going to pull that up here in just a second.
I actually have it pulled up on my screen, if you need, I could screen share it here.
Do they come up?
Yep. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve Resolution Number 02-2022, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Bjarnson. Discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion?
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Mayor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjarnson?
Aye.
That's all.
Resolution passes.
Okay, while she's bringing up the next one, I'll read, read it to you. Resolution Number 03-2022, a resolution certifying that Save Oak Ridge provides four or more of the required municipal services for state funding. Whereas ORS 221.760 provides as follows, Section 1, the officer responsible for distributing funds for cities under ORS 323.455366.7852366.820 and 471.805 shall, in the case of a city located with an accounting having more than 100,000 inhabitants, according to the most recent federal decennial census, distribute such funds only if the city provides four or more of the following services: fire protection, or excuse me, police protection, fire protection, street constructions, maintenance and lighting, sanitary sewers, storm sewers, planning, zoning, subdivision control, one or more utility services, and whereas the city officials recognize that the desirability of assisting in the state officer responsible for determining the eligibility of cities to receive such funds in accordance with ORS 221.760, the city of Oak Ridge certifies that it provides the following services: police protection, fire protections, street construction, maintenance and lighting, sanitary sewers, storm sewers, planning, zoning and subdivision control, and water utility services. Passed by the council of the city of Oak Ridge this 28th day of June 2022, approved and signed by the mayor of the city of Oak Ridge this 28th day of June 2022, and it's signed Mayor Hollitt and attested by Jackie Taylor, city recorder, and the a's and nays are recorded.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 03-2022, a resolution certifying that the city of Oak Ridge provides four or more of the required municipal services for state funding.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Coker, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Bjarnson?
Aye.
Counsel, Mayor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
That's all.
Motion carried, or thank you.
Next one now? Resolution Number 4-2022, resolution adopting the budget. Be resolved that the city council of the city of Oak Ridge, Oregon hereby adopts the budget or fiscal year, for fiscal year 2022 and 2023 in the total amount of $10,480,702. This budget is now, now on file at www.okebridge.or.us. Resolution making appropriations, be resolved that the amounts shown below are hereby appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022 for the following purposes: general fund, administrative, $883,147. Building and planning, $84,378. Police, $1,197,978. Library, $32,250. Parks, $120,210. Lament Activity Center, $1,515,643. Municipal Court, $82,710. Not allocated to programs, $48,000 in material, $48,755 in materials and service, transfers out, $580,736. Contingency, $399,309. Total appropriations for general fund are $4,945,136. Street fund, street, street program is $664,202. Contingency is $32,668. Total appropriations for the street fund are $696,870. Emergency Services Fund, emergency services, EMS services is $1,155,266. Contingency fund is $100,000. Total appropriations for Emergency Services Fund are $1,255,266. Oak Ridge Industrial Park Funds, the industrial park is $244,124. Contingency is $150,436. The Oak Ridge Industrial Park Fund total is $394,560. Waste Water Fund, water, water utility is 100, or $1,266,879. Debt services, $230,118. Transfers out are $25,000. Contingency is $166,719. Total appropriations for the water fund are, are $1,688,716. Waste Water Fund, Waste Water Utility is $766,430. Not allocated to program, debt service is $15,000, and contingency is $406,957. Total appropriations to the Waste Water Fund are $1,188,387. Storm Water Fund, I gotta get a drink of water for a second.
Could you scroll down? Can you scroll down, please?
It's going down here. Okay, that's a little bit, Storm Water Fund, Storm Water Utility is $53,550. Not allocated to a program, contingency is $58,498. Total appropriations for the Storm Water Fund are $112,044. Total appropriations for all funds is $5,738,994. Total unappropriated amounts of all funds is $5,101,708. The total budget is $10,487,202. Resolution imposing and categorizing the tax. Be, be it resolved that ad valorem property taxes are hereby imposed upon the assessed value of all taxable property within the district for the tax year 22, 2022, 2023, at the rate of $7.1996 per 100,000 of assessed value for permanent tax rate. These taxes are hereby categorized for purposes of Article 11, Section 11B, as subject to and within general government limitation. Passed by the city council of Oak Ridge this 20th day of June 2022, approved and signed by the mayor of the city of Oak Ridge this 28th day of June 2022, and it's signed, Mayor Hollitt and attests Jackie Taylor, recorder, and the, the a's and nays are recorded.
Chief, one correction. When you were reading it, you said per 100,000 of assessed value.
To note that is.
To make sure the citizens know.
Yeah, it's, it's 1,000 of assessed, I'll reread that part to clarify.
Thank you.
Be resolved that ad valorem property taxes are hereby imposed upon the assessed value of all taxable property within the district for tax year 2022 and 2023, at the rate of $7.196 per $1,000 of assessed value for permanent tax rate. Thank you, Counselor. We'd have a little bit less taxes if we.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move, could we scroll to the top of this page, please? Oh, down a little, the other way, oh, four. Right there. I move to approve Resolution Number 04-2022, a resolution adopting the budget.
I'll second that.
To clarify.
Just, just your CA trying to clarify before we go forward. Unless you're going to be more than one motion, I believe it should say resolution adopting the budget, resolution making appropriations, and resolution imposing and categorizing the tax.
Thank you, I will restate my motion. I move to approve Resolution Number 04-2022, a resolution adopting the budget, and a resolution making appropriations, and a resolution. Could you scroll a little bit, please?
It's two pages, scroll down two pages. Well, technically, it's, page goes up, but.
The other way.
Yeah, keep going down. Right, right there, just a little bit.
And a resolution imposing and categorizing the tax.
I'll second that.
No. There was a motion made and seconded, is this a friendly amendment, or?
No, it was not seconded, I had not finished speaking, and I changed my motion.
Okay, thank you. I thought it was seconded.
I jumped in. I'm sorry, who was it that seconded it? Counselor Hooker.
Motion made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Hooker. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff?
No, I just forgot, take my hand down, sorry.
Okay, Counselor Kenyon?
Um, I just spent the last several minutes trying to find this budget on the city website, and I'm wondering if someone can direct me to where it is on the city website. I looked under government and under key documents, which is where I generally find it, and then I also looked under.
It's right there.
Um, that is a graph, not the budget. Oh. Updated budget, thank you. Can that be moved into the key documents directory with all the other budgets?
Yes, ma'am.
As well as here, thank you. Um. So, my first thing that comes to mind is I would like the council to talk about the two funds that are no longer in this budget that used to exist in every budget before it. One is called the Woodstove Replacement Fund, and one is called the Bicycle and Pedestrian Path Fund.
I'm not like five times today.
Excuse me, what's that, Jackie?
It wasn't, I didn't know I was muted.
Okay, so it wasn't a question for me?
No, no.
Um. I believe the council needs to close the funds if they're not in this budget. And I've been told that it's already been done. So I definitely feel we need to make we need to make some kind of a motion or something to match that it's done, and appropriate where the funds are going to be moved to. Which would be separate from this motion, obviously.
Yeah, Don, so the funds have already been, we just.
Yeah, Dawn, so the funds have already been, we just put it, we allocated them into the general, back into the general, so um, if you guys wanna move them somewhere else, we can do that. It's, um, just a matter of what you wanna do, but it's already in the beginning balance of the General Fund because we had to do something with them. So the only thing that we were waiting was for the Council to approve closing those.
Okay, um, since they're already moved, then I think as soon as we're done with the budget, we need to make motions to close those and, uh, and appropriate where we wanna see those funds get transferred to. Which I'm willing to do when we're done with this one. Um, and then secondly, I wanted to point out that, uh, on the last version that I looked at, and I'm gonna scroll down and look and see if I can see it here. Yeah, I see a couple of places, like if you look at page three, which is the first page of the General Fund. You notice how in the budget on the, the three columns on the right-hand side of the page, the first one is proposed by the Budget Officer. Second column is by the Budget Committee. And the third one's by the governing body. So the numbers that are in on that line number two need to be updated because as they're not consistent with what we were actually presented with and approved. And a lot of those updates got made, but a few of them didn't throughout the budget. So instead of going through the whole entire budget and um, pointing each one out, I, I'd like to just ask that we would approve an updated version that has those corrections. We have all the numbers. They just aren't there. Does that make sense to everyone? I'll take that as a no questions.
Dawn, are you saying that I missed um, updating what was in?
I know specifically on line two. The amount that was proposed by the Budget Officer when we first got it was a hundred. Wait, let me double check here. No, it was two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And then the amount that was approved by the Budget Committee was one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And now the amount that you'd like us to approve tonight is three hundred and four thousand.
Dawn, can I clarify? Because I think I know what you're talking about. So the first line section, there's spots that don't have the original budgeted amount from what we gave you on the first day. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I understand now.
Yeah, there was just so many changes.
Yeah, there was a lot of changes, but they need to be reflected in the final document, so. And most of it has been. I've looked through the whole thing. There's just, I don't know, maybe five or six spots throughout the budget that didn't get updated.
Okay.
So, um, but what's in column number two right now, the approved by Budget Committee column actually needs to get moved into the adopted by governing, because that's what you're asking us right now to adopt is the three hundred and four thousand dollar amount.
Correct.
So that whole column gets moved over and then you know, whatever didn't change goes into the Budget Committee column, et cetera, et cetera. I'm hoping that the Council understands what I'm talking about and agrees that we can let that, those updates be made after approving the budget.
Well, all the final numbers were on the, the resolution. So I just need to update this spreadsheet.
Right. And that's all I have for right now. If anyone else has questions.
Counselors, is there anyone that has discussion or questions?
Hello, can you hear me? My name is William Pocordine. I think I'm, I'm unmuted.
William, are you speaking on public comment or?
Well, I was just one line item budget that was on the presentation that was earlier. And basically it deals with the wastewater budget item. You have your operations and then you also have a contingency fund which is a tremendous percentage of the overall budget. Most contingency funds should be something that would reflect, I would think, reality.
Which line item are you talking about?
Okay, we're talking about uh, wastewater treatment budget. It was not, not, it was on your earlier presentation. It could be on this one too, but I don't know. I haven't seen the bottom of this one yet.
Waste Water is like the second to the last fund.
Correct.
So it would be probably, this is twenty-five pages. It'll probably be on page twenty-four.
Um, well typically we don't, um, do public comment in, at this time, but I'm gonna go ahead and maybe allow Counselor Kenyon to answer that a question if she wants.
What was the, um, the question was about the amount that's on contingency. I believe it's, if we could scroll to page twenty-four. I believe it is three hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And can you clarify the question again, Mayor?
Um, William, you'll have to, I think when he was saying-
Yeah, scroll down and we'll find out what we're looking at.
Are we talking about the Waste Water Fund?
Correct.
The, the contingency of four hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven?
Something like that, yes.
Oh, okay, it got updated.
Yeah, it's on the, um, resolution sheet, Dawn, or Counselor Kenyon, sorry.
Yeah, on the resolution side.
Um, the resolution would be the total amount for the whole entire fund, not the contingency.
Uh, Counselor Kenyon, I, do you, do you recall, I know there was two water funds that were repaid this year. Was one of them a wastewater?
Yes, water and wastewater.
Yes, so that would be about half of that.
Yeah, for each one of the utility funds, you have a contingency, but I noticed the one for the Water Fund is a significant proportion of the overall budget.
Can we scroll down one more page?
Waste Water.
Yeah, this is the beginning of Waste Water, but it continues on the next page. And that's where the contingency is, which is right here. Um, line sixty-one.
Correct.
Contingency is three hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven.
Right.
And your-
It, it's, it represents over thirty percent of the overall budget. That's a significant amount for what you would normally consider in my world of managing things for contingency.
Right. And, and normally, as you can see in prior years on the left-hand side of the page, uh, we've had little to no contingency whatsoever.
Correct.
So I can, I can assume what's happened is this year's budget has, um, more money in the fund than they anticipated, and it's probably because of what uh, Colleen just mentioned was that last year we borrowed money from, or actually the current year that we're in. No. The year before the current year we're in, we borrowed, I think it was two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from the Waste Water Fund to use in the General Fund to cover things like police, fire, ambulance, administration, because we were, we were extremely short in our General Fund. So then during this current year, we had to pay that money back. And I think what Colleen's saying is that
Okay.
We've got the money in the fund now and we just, we haven't, we've put it in contingency only to protect it because we haven't budgeted how we're gonna spend it yet. So if there was some kind of crazy, which we're actually in our Waste Water Fund right now and our Water Fund, we are looking at, we're way overdue on updating our system.
Right.
So there's a potential for, you know, a catastrophe of some kind.
I, I, yeah, I under, I understand that, but I think that the, your, it would be appropriate to label it as such. Not calling it a contingency fund, saying, you know, like some sort of capital improvement or future improvement or something like that. You know, so it's not given the impression that is just money there sitting with no responsible function. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, I do see what you're saying.
You know, that's just, that's just my question. It's just something I noticed that, um, like I said, I, I've worked on a lot of municipal projects in different ways and I I, we, we, normal contingency would be like fifteen percent here. If you're lucky.
Yeah. Good.
I can, I can maybe answer part of that. We are gonna have eventually to spend a huge amount of money for I N I and so
Right.
as much contingency as we can get.
Yes. Do, do you, do you have an understanding of how I N I is conducted?
I do not. I'm just going off what my-
I worked- Yeah, I, I, I've worked, I'm a retired civil engineer and I've worked on several projects, setting up programs for municipal places and things like that. And, uh, I, I, I understand how it's all done. You have to do things. And like I said, I've done it for several communities in Western Pennsylvania specifically. And, uh, needless to say, if you set up a program and manage it, you can get a lot of work done and be efficient.
I also wanted to note that a hundred thousand of that um, came from ARPA funds from this current year that was never spent yet.
Okay, it, it's just a question I had. That's all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, just for the record, we normally don't allow public comment i- in this portion, but um, I did allow that comment because I assumed it would be a good topic. Um, is there any more counselor comments on the budget? I do wanna bring something up. I have not been, um, commenting in favor, opposed, or neutral, or anything uh, because I do have an actual conflict and I should have, uh, created a spot at the beginning of the budget hearing where people could state their conflicts. So I'm just gonna go ahead and state mine now and put it on the record that I have not spoke um, regarding the budget during this meeting. And I have an actual conflict because my husband works for the City of Oak Ridge under a collective bargaining unit agreement, and I'm also a volunteer for the Fire Department and give an opportunity if there's anyone else that would like to declare a conflict.
Yeah, gosh, I just thought about that right before you did. Um, sorry for not catching it sooner, but I'm declaring a potential conflict because I'm on the volunteer roster at the Fire Department.
Thank you, Melissa, Counselor Burnson. All right, let's go ahead with discussion if there's any counselors that have comments on the, um, section that we're at right now, which is the last resolution for adopting the budget.
Um, I'll make one more comment. I think that um, our citizen brought up a good point and maybe in the future for next year's look at, um, appropriate use of contingency funds and reserve for future expenditure funds and balance that out maybe a little better in the future. But I am just happy to see that we have some excess money that's not necessary for, uh, daily operations that we have for backup, so I'm gonna say I think it's okay to leave it as is for now and work on it in the future.
Any more council discussion? Any more council discussion? All right, Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Spleedoff?
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson?
I.
Counselor Hooker?
I.
Mayor Hollitt?
Upstain.
Counselor Coker?
I.
Counselor Kenyon?
I.
That's all.
All right. So the next thing, um, on the agenda would be is it number ten, Kevin?
No, we technically did, did all that.
Okay.
So one, one thing I'd like to point out, ask the question, does what Dawn suggested, do we wanna do that tonight before we leave, or do we wanna do that at one of your next meetings? And that would be to, for the Council to make some type of motion about bike, ped and bike, ped and wood stove funds. Is that correct, Dawn? Counselor Kenyon?
Yes.
And that was, uh, Kena from Alcoa told Colleen that was a, uh, to move that to the General Fund or to a spot and that, that the Council then needed to approve closing those two funds. Is that, is that correct?
I would like to go ahead and make a motion. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I move that the City Council close the Woodstove Replacement Fund and transfer seventeen thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars into the General Fund.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Spleedoff. Discussion? Any discussion? All right, Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Hooker?
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Spleedoff. Mayor Hollitt.
I'm going to abstain again.
Okay. Counselor Coker.
I.
Counselor Bjornson.
I.
Like to make another motion.
Go ahead.
And move that the city council close the bicycle and pedestrian path fund. And transfer the 10,000. And $76. Into the street fund.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Spleedoff. Any discussion?
I just wanted to point out that all of the money that was in the bicycle and pit path fund came from the street fund in increments of $2,000 a year for several years. And that's why I think it needs to go back into the street fund.
Any more discussion? All right, Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Bjornson.
I.
Are you abstaining, Mayor?
Yes, thank you for asking.
Counselor Spleedoff. Ma, Counselor Hooker.
I.
Counselor Coker.
I.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, Chief, next on the agenda, are we done with those four resolutions?
Yeah, it's a. Three leather, it's only three resolutions and you guys completed all those. The one was technically the three parts together. So technically, we don't have anything else. I have a closing statement when council's done.
Okay. Counselors, do you have any statements? All right, go ahead, Chief.
I, I just wanted to note all of the stuff that came, came out during this budget process that. To start earlier, there's some portions of it. I believe we can start earlier on. I have a list of stuff for the new CA, a lot of it's like. Stuff that was mentioned both by citizen members and council members and stuff out of my mind. Like figuring out what contingency to be what. And it's.
You're cutting out a lot.
The. I pay for you for expenses that are larger.
Chief, you're cutting out a lot. I don't know if it is for everybody else.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, same here.
Pretty garbled. I can't hear. Use Jackie's headset. That thing is loud and clear.
And unmute.
Immuded.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
The, the tablet doesn't like me towards the end of meetings, I guess. Just to basically statements in general is loud and clear that we should start. We should start the process earlier. There's a lot of things in the process that we can do earlier. I have a list of stuff for the new CA, stuff like how to figure out. How we should properly figure out administrative overhead, how we should figure out contingencies. How we should plan for future expenses, expenses, capital projects and so on and so forth. One of the hard parts is for the personnel side, we don't get a lot of the information until like. Literally the first couple of days in May, so the personnel side is harder, but there's no reason we couldn't figure out a lot of the stuff ahead of time. And have a little bit more training and have some exercises with staff and whatnot. So. Just wanted to keep that on everybody's mind and hopefully council will keep that on their mind and keep it on the new city administrator's mind and. Because I believe the, we can get through this, but years coming will be a little tougher and we've got to figure some of that stuff out and, but I think we can do it.
Agreed. Thank you, Chief. And as always, as Mayor and I know council feels this way, we are so appreciative to all the staff. This has been a tough year and you guys all have put in so much work and. Just all the dialogue and information we've all learned this year has just been so valuable. So. I appreciate you guys so much. I just, I appreciate it so much. Thank you, guys. Counselors, if you have any more comments, please go ahead. Colleen can't hear you. What a great first year, huh, Colleen?
First few months.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
I can remember. Last year. The budget did not go so good. A lot of arguing, bickering and everything, and I've got to say. For everybody out here that this year's budget season went quite well. Everybody played well together and got a lot of things accomplished. We acted all as professionals. And I want to thank Colleen and Kevin to jump in foot first and. Get her done. So thank the rest of the counselors too.
Thank you, Counselor. Go ahead, Counselor Coker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say thank you to Colleen, Kevin, you, Mayor Hollitt, for this being an absolute amazing year compared to last year.
Agreed. I agree.
All right. Um, public comment. Do we have anyone inside of City Hall that would like to comment or any staff? Colleen, did you have any comments? I actually had one more little thing I wanted to do, which at our last meeting, I did speak a little bit about sending out a survey. And I do want to make sure that I move forward with that. So it would be really awesome if. Myself, Colleen, Kevin, the new city administrator. And maybe one other counselor. I'm kind of looking at Counselor Kenyon, but I would love us to do kind of a debrief, debrief. We do that in the emergency world for lots of things, and I think in this would be really helpful if we did a debrief and put together a survey. To make sure we do a really good thorough job and get all the questions out from lots of different angles. Especially to our budget committee members and also. Offer it to budget committee members to submit some questions to us, just so we're super thorough and we have an awesome next budget season. So Colleen, don't let me forget about that. Let's get it together. Um, I see one hand raised. Jan Christensen, go ahead.
Yeah, it's, you passed the motion on sending the money for the wood stove replacement to the general fund. I just had a home inspection today for that very thing. So am I like? Not going to have that happen now that that money's been moved?
No, that's not really what it means. Um, Colleen or Dawn, would you like to answer that?
Jan, I think you're, you might be going through Oak Ridge Air, their program, which is different than what this was.
Okay.
You're fine.
My mistake. Thanks. And good job, all you guys. I wish I'd been there and a little more involved, but I'm glad that. It's done.
Well, you got one more year with us, Jan, and we just, we want your back too.
Yeah, you just have to help me out a little more with the, where do I find the meeting in a consistent place? Because I don't. Look on my computer constantly looking and then, you know, half an hour before I'm looking and I'm like, well, where is it? And I really struggle to find it. So I'd like something consistent. And I agree with everybody. Get it started early, earlier the better.
Thank you, Jan. Any more public comment? Counselor Kenyon? Go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to point out for Jan's benefit and everyone's benefit. That we are working towards going back to, it'll be called a hybrid meeting. But it'll be in-person meeting at City Hall. For those who wish to attend. And for those who wish to watch it on Zoom, they still will be able to. And we'll probably have some kind of a permanent link. Uh. On the city website somewhere would be my assumption. But everyone would be welcome to come back and hopefully that's by the end of this month or are we in July yet? No, sorry. By the end of July. We should be able to go back to in person.
Yeah.
That's the goal.
That's the goal. Anyone else? No one? Adi, go ahead.
I just wondering, is it? This, the Kevin's computer down there cutting out or is it our wifi or? What is it that we're having a problem with down there? Because if we all go down there and go on Zoom and it cuts out all the time, then.
It's not. It is just his little tablet that he uses. The wifi is great here and we're actually going to be bumping it up. For the council chamber, so we'll be good.
I just wanted to make sure I, I just went out and spent. Mooku money on a new computer because mine went. They were, so it's going good now.
All right, everyone. Thank you for a very productive meeting. Yay, we have a budget before June 30th. All right, everyone, have a great night and meeting adjourned at 19:38 PM. Good night.
Good night.